Make a motion, we start the meeting.
Second.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the Radcliffe City Council Meeting, special called meeting for Friday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at three P. M. at Radcliffe City Hall. If you will rise as Ms. Russo gives our invocation and remain standing for a pledge.
All right, let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the blessings that you give us every and each day. Father, we pray for each and every council person up here as they set the budget for the city for the upcoming year. Father, we pray for the mayor and his guidance of the city and its departments over the next year. Father, we pray for those that are serving our country, both here and abroad, and Father, we also pray for those that are still battling sickness through the pandemic. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
But you lead in your spirit.
Have the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, in the dismal with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
Deroche?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Merle?
Here.
Owens? Thompson? Yates?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. All right, just a reminder to the council members, this is a special called meeting, and so we will, we have new business items one through six, and that will be, that's all that's discussed on the agenda. So with that, Mr. Pike, under new business, can we have a second reading of the ordinance adopting the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky's annual budget fiscal year July first, two thousand and twenty-one through July, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, by estimating revenues, resources, appropriation of funds for the operation of city government, sir?
Yes, sir. This is the ordinance adopting the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, annual budget for the fiscal year July one, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of the city government. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council, whereas the city council has reviewed such budget proposal and made necessary modifications, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky. Section one, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-one and ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two is hereby adopted as follows. Under anticipated revenues, fund balance carryover under general fund eighty-five thousand, three hundred dollars; stormwater utility fund forty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars; advolorum taxes under general fund, two million, forty-two thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars; franchise fees under general fund, nine hundred fifty-one thousand dollars; insurance premium taxes under general fund, three million, two hundred thousand dollars; occupational fees under general fund, three million, nine hundred thousand, five hundred dollars; fines, fees, forfeitures under general fund, fifty-four thousand dollars; license and permit fees under general fund, one million, one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars; recreation fees under general fund, fifty-four thousand dollars; debt proceeds under general fund, zero; other revenues under general fund, two hundred, three thousand, seven hundred dollars under stormwater utility fund, one thousand, seven hundred dollars; intergovernmental revenues under general fund, five hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred dollars under road L. G. E. A. funds, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars under stormwater utility fund, four hundred two thousand dollars; charge for services under general fund, seventy-one thousand dollars under stormwater utility fund, nine hundred eighty thousand dollars; total resources available under general fund, twelve million, three hundred forty-one thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars under road L. G. E. A. funds, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars under stormwater utility fund, one million, four hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. On the appropriation side, police department under general fund, four million, nine hundred eleven thousand, three hundred dollars; administration department under general fund, one million, one hundred four, excuse me, one million, four hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars; fire department under general fund, two million, eight hundred seventy thousand, four hundred dollars; public works department under general fund, one million, four hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollars; road L. G. E. A. funds, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars; parks and recreation department under general fund, eight hundred, two thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars; economic development, planning and building department under general fund, four hundred twenty-two thousand dollars; capitalized fund appropriations under general fund, four hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars; road L. G. E. A. funds, three hundred ninety-nine thousand; stormwater utility fund, ninety-seven thousand; stormwater utility under stormwater utility fund, one million, three hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars; total appropriations, general fund, twelve million, three hundred forty-one thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars; road L. G. A. funds are four hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars; stormwater utility fund, four, one million, four hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. That is the second reading, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the budget for, as read by Mr. Pike, for fiscal year July one, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Motion, second by Ms. Merle, any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call vote, please?
Deroche?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, Mr. Pike, we have a second reading of the ordinance amending the city of Radcliffe's classification and compensation pay plan, salary equalization and adjustments.
Mayor, this is the second reading of the ordinance amending the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan, salary, pay equalization and adjustment. Whereas the city council of Radcliffe, Kentucky, adopted an ordinance establishing the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan on the first day of July, two thousand, whereas the city council's desires to amend that ordinance under the section entitled, "Salary Pay Equalization and Adjustment," as follows. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Radcliffe, Kentucky, as follows. The salary pay equalization and adjustment is amended by adding and amending the table attached here, too. The remainder of the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan shall remain the same. That is the second reading, Mayor, ready for motion to adopt.
Have a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the class, the pay plan, salary pay equalization and adjustment.
Second.
Motion, second by Mr. Jackson, if we have any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call vote, please?
Jackson?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Deroche?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next, Mr. Pike, can we have a reading of a second, a second reading of the ordinance amending the city of Radcliffe's classification and compensation pay plan, section employee strength table?
This is the ordinance amending the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan, section employee strength table. Whereas the city council of Radcliffe, Kentucky, adopted an ordinance establishing the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan on the first day of July, two thousand and one, and whereas the city council's desires to amend that ordinance under the section entitled, "Employee Strength Table," as follows. Be it ordained by the city council of Radcliffe, Kentucky, as follows. The employee strength table is amended by adding and amending the table attached here, too. The remainder of the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, classification and compensation pay plan shall remain the same. That is second reading, ready for motion to adopt.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the pay plan section, employee strength table.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Merle?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Deroche?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next, uh, Mr. Pike, second reading of a ordinance.
I got it.
Of the zoning, rezoning, rezoning the property located at the south side of South Wilson Road between Horseshoe Court and Shelton Road.
You're doing my job for me.
You're welcome, sir.
You don't get paid any extra. This is the second reading of a zoning ordinance rezoning the property located on the east side of South Wilson Road between Horseshoe Court and Shelton Road, approximately five hundred and sixty feet south of Horseshoe Court, Radcliffe, Kentucky. P. V. A. map one sixty-one dash forty dash zero zero dash zero five three from residential four zone to commercial zone. The city council of the city of Radcliffe has ordained as follows. Whereas the planning commission for the city of Radcliffe has recommended to the city council, based on the meeting dated June third, two thousand and twenty-one, that the land located on the east side of South Wilson Road between Horseshoe Court and Shelton Road, approximately five hundred and sixty feet south of Horseshoe Court, Radcliffe, Kentucky, P. V. A. map one sixty-one dash forty dash zero zero dash zero five three, and described here and after be rezoned from residential four zone to commercial zone. Now therefore, the property located in Radcliffe, Kentucky, and more particularly bounded and described here and below is as follows, "Commercial." The following described property is located on the east side of South Wilson Road between Horseshoe Court and Shelton Road, approximately five hundred and sixty feet south of Horseshoe Court, Radcliffe, Kentucky, P. V. A. map number one sixty-one dash forty dash zero zero dash zero five three, said property is to be "Commercial." Any reference to a set pin refers to a half-inch rebar, twenty-four inches long, with a plastic cap marked G. S. Turner, L. S. twenty-one fifty-three, being approximately zero point one three miles southeast of Horseshoe Court, on the east right-of-way of South Wilson Road, Highway four forty-seven, and being more particularly bounded and described as follows. Beginning at a found half-inch iron pin with no I. D., approximately thirty feet east of the center line of South Wilson Road in the line of Wilburn and Kathleen Cisco, deed book twelve sixty-seven, page two forty-three. Thence leaving the right-of-way of South Wilson Road and following Cisco north, sixty-nine degrees, twenty-two minutes, six seconds east, a distance of two hundred thirty-one point twenty-eight feet to a set pin, said pin being a common corner with Cisco and in the line of Lanham, deed book nine eighty-five, page two ninety-five. Thence following Lanham and then House, deed book thirteen forty-two, page twelve oh seven, south seventeen degrees, fifteen minutes, fifty-four seconds east, a distance of one hundred fifty-seven point fifty-five feet to a found pin with no I. D., a common corner with Glenda and Timothy Brown, deed book fourteen eighty-one, page four twenty-seven. Thence with Brown, south seventy-one degrees, nineteen minutes, fifty-three seconds west, a distance of two hundred eighteen point zero five feet to a set pin approximately thirty feet east of the center line of South Wilson Road, said pin being a common corner with Brown. Thence leaving Brown and following the east right-of-way of South Wilson Road, north twenty-two degrees, twelve minutes, nine seconds west, a distance of four hundred forty-nine point eighty-six feet, which is the point of beginning, having an area of zero point seven nine two acres. Being the same property acquired by Gerald Arlanum by deed dated December fifteenth, two thousand, of record in deed book nine eighty-five, page two ninety-five, in the office of the Harden County Court Clerk, the property is owned by Gerald Arlanum. Together with and subject covenants, easements, and restrictions of record, the zoning map shall be amended in accordance with said ordinance. That is the second reading, Mayor, ready for motion to adopt.
Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning of the property located on the east side of South Wilson Road between Horseshoe Court and Shelton Road, P. V. A. map number one six one dash four zero dash zero zero dash zero five three from residential four to commercial zone.
Motion, second by Ms. Owens, do we have any discussion? This was talked about at the work session.
Mr. Roche has to abstain, actually it's a recusal based on a conflict of interest because of her involvement with financing on the property, so she will not be voting. And it will not be an abstention, it'll be a legal recusal.
So let's put that in the minutes. So we got four here, so we have, yeah, so good. All right, hearing nothing else, any other comments? We will go to roll call vote, please.
Owens?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roche, we have you as recused. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
And Ms. Merle?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next, and this is the consideration approved change in the mayor's position salary. Uh, just want to make sure it's clear that that is not for me. This is not, it'll be for the next upcoming individual coming into office, so I don't want anybody to get confused watching that, but I will not have any discussion regarding this, so I'll leave this up to council members that want to talk about this.
I just think that it needs to be looked at. I think currently the mayor's salary is around sixty-one thousand, is that correct? Uh, it hasn't been looked at in several years. Of course, the mayor's the C. E. O. of the city, has a lot of employees under him, a lot of responsibility. So I think that, uh, we should raise the salary to seventy-two thousand, five hundred. I think that's a fair number. Not for sure what y'all think, but that's my thought.
Well, I'm in agreement with making an increase. I mean, even with that, he's still not going to be top paid.
Right.
So, um, employ on this salary stuff.
Individual, not he.
Individual, I'm sorry. My, my correction, that individual could be female or male.
We'll still have several city employees that will be making more than the mayor.
That's correct, so I, I'm in agreement with making that increase.
I'm in agreement. Probably deserves more, but we'll stay with that for the next position. I mean, that position's a tough position, like you said, so.
So this would go into effect twenty twenty?
Three.
Three?
Whoever wins the election, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I must be, I must be doing something right, because when I was here, eleven to fourteen, they raised it when I was a fourteen, and then I didn't get it. And then when I came back in.
They're raising again, what do you think, Mike? Trying to run me off with increases.
Dumb luck, yeah.
But yeah, I think initially it was a forty-one, the first time, and I think that's about what Mayor Enya was making, somewhere in there.
Crazy.
And then I think they raised it to fifty-eight. Yeah, somewhere in there, under, and that's what Mayor Weaver was able to during that term, and then, of course, when I came back in, so that just gives you the history of those two.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we raise the mayor's salary to seventy-two thousand.
Through the date.
Five hundred, starting January one, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
A motion, second, have any discussion? Hearing none, you have roll call vote.
Yates?
Yes.
Deroche?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. And the next is the consideration approval of the amendment to the city of Radcliffe's policy and procedure manuals, three dot five, three dot six dot two, and three dot six dot three. This is the chance, do you want to address this? Yeah, you can come up, probably. I don't know if you have turned the mic on, if you don't care, so the people. Hey dude.
Yep, got it. There you go.
Um, so as you all remember, we adopted the police, a new police, uh, plan, uh, by council action. I think that was made effective in May. We then, at budget time, talked about a fire department pay plan. Um, you, we had some discussion about that, I think we came to general terms about that. The only thing at the time that you all had asked us administratively to come up with are some salary caps. That kind of, uh, because that, what, that is what was also done for the police department positions. It was originally on the, on the agenda, as you all know, to be discussed on Tuesday. But then, uh, looking at, late last week, I was looking at some of the scenarios, um, that caused some discrepancy, and I felt like we needed to remove it from the agenda, so I could, uh, kind of adjust or tweak the plan a little bit. And in, in specific, we had some, we had some, uh, firefighters that, uh, if you took a firefighter who was like a ten or eleven-year firefighter, and they were to get the promotion at ten percent as the plan laid out, uh, they potentially could get a pay raise to be promoted from firefighter to sergeant and have a lower sergeant pay than what the pay plan called for that was currently in effect. I don't think that was the intent by anybody. Obviously, we raised the base pay of a firefighter, uh, with this new proposal from thirty-two thousand to thirty-seven, and I think there were some assumptions that, uh, we weren't going to be going backwards on how our folks upon promotion would be paid. So I had to make some adjustments to the, to the basic plan up, which is, I think, what, uh, the mayor's office had sent to you all, uh, yesterday. So that section in its entirety is that section three dots, six dot three. And in a nutshell, what I had to do was, when I was looking at the salary of a, for example, a twenty-year firefighter when I first sent the proposal up, um, that we talked about at budget time, we had a twenty-year firefighter, um, let's get my reference point here. Twenty-year firefighter was making a salary of fifty-one thousand, sixty dollars. Well, when I looked at that figure after the fact and compared that to what a twenty-year firefighter was making on the plan that was currently in effect, the one that the city adopted in two thousand and fifteen, that figure was fifty-two five. So they were actually going to be earning less under a pay plan that we gave some assumptions on was increasing pay. So obviously, that, um, is what prompted that, uh, and I felt like obviously that's not what the vision of the council was. So, uh, subject to that, I went back and looked at, the only way to adjust for that accordingly would be to increase the one and a half percent, what we're going to call a COLA step or an annual step, that is, that is what was originally presented. I needed to make that step two percent. That was the only way to adjust for that, so that a twenty- or twenty-five-year firefighter would actually be making more under the new proposal with a starting salary of thirty-seven thousand. So I ran those, I ran those figures, um, uh, and then it, so it brought us more in line with what a, so a twenty-year firefighter now, under the new proposal, would be making. Sorry, the previous, and let me make a correction on that. The previous amount, when I mentioned a twenty-year firefighter, was forty-seven thousand, five forty-five. So that was almost five thousand dollars less than what a twenty-year firefighter would be making. So that is initially what really what, what prompted the change, um, and that's why I adjusted it to that two percent. So, once I went back and I adjusted the two percent scale, um, I needed to make a small adjustment also to the position caps. Now, I think you all never actually saw the position caps, because it never came to you last Friday. So as you see now on the proposal, the position caps, um, uh, that you see start off at fifty, fifty-six thousand for a police officer, uh, and they go up six thousand dollars incrementally. That is the same incremental increase that the police department had. Now, uh, their salary caps, uh, or the, the caps for a police officer in every command position thereafter, uh, are a little higher than the fire department. I think that's something that we had discussions on at budget time. But the margin of difference of six thousand is, remains consistent from fifty-six to sixty-two thousand for a sergeant, uh, sixty-eight for a lieutenant, seventy-four for the new, uh, captain, uh, eighty for a deputy chief, which, of course, right now, we don't have that person in that, in that position. And then that did adjust the, uh, police chief to eighty-six thousand. And I needed to make that change to maintain that, that consistency. So outside of the cap and outside of that two percent, which I had to adjust from one and a half percent, those were really the changes. Everything else, uh, remained the same, uh, and again, it, it fairly closely mirrors, uh, the, the same structure of plan that was done for the police department back in May.
So the police department's getting one point five percent?
Yes, the police, the police department stepped.
What's that?
The police department stepped, yeah, so is, well, originally it was three percent, and then I think the council determined, rather than it being three percent every other year, they'd make it one and a half percent a year. So it is, uh, a little higher under this proposal, and the fire at two percent annually. And again, that, it, I, that, I had to do that because, um, and just without getting into a lot of detail, but basically, the old plan, you know, there were stepping stones, um, a five thousand dollars salary for every five years of service. So it went from thirty-two thousand, five years of service, you'd go to thirty-seven, five years of service, you'd go to forty-two. Well, when you do the math between those five-year increments, the percentage of increase is actually more than the two percent or the one and a half percent that was originally proposed. That's why firefighters under that proposal would actually be earning less under the current plan than they would have been earning under the existing plan. So that's why I had adjusted to two percent, to make sure that we weren't going backwards on having a lower pay for these positions.
So Chance, on page fourteen, the position chief, the salary says, um, seventy-six five, were, were we not at eighty-five three?
The, the seventy-six is a base, that would be no less than.
Okay.
Yeah, so in other words, depending on a circumstance, if you had someone that was promoted through the ranks, and they met all the minimum time thresholds that are established for them to move up from sergeant to lieutenant and so on, you could have a situation where your chief, at a minimum level, would be earning the seventy-six five figure. But depending on when they receive those promotions in relation to their, to time, um, obviously, a chief could be making more than the minimum, and that's why we have that qualifier of ten percent upon promotion, or the base, whatever is greater. I mean, I think at budget time, there was some discussion about the chief's salary.
Right.
And it was around eighty-five two, I believe, and, but, but with the, uh, after I had adjusted for that two percent, basically, more so on the low end, to make sure our firefighters were not earning less. They want to establish those caps to maintain the same six thousand dollar incremental, uh, difference. It bumped it a little higher from what originally was eighty-five to eighty-six.
But now by doing the one and a half percent for police and two percent by fire, you don't have the, quite as of a gap.
You may not, but of course, part of that has to do, you know, with the fact that, um, you know, firefighter base pay has been established at thirty-seven, of course, police at forty-two. But what happens is, um, without that two percent, and I realize, um, I realize what the council was, the intentions on setting those base pays and those discussion about that, the problem you have is if you don't go with the two percent for the firefighters, they are going to earn less money than the old pay scale had, and that's without question.
So I, I guess my question is, in order to maintain the gap, how much would a half, would the two percent cost us for the police department as well?
I, I don't know. I mean, obviously, that policy is currently in effect. The police officer's pay has already been adjusted with the first payroll in June. I mean, I would have to go back and determine and calculate what that would be, I mean, I don't know offhand what that would be.
Okay.
But obviously, once these pay plans are put into effect, I mean, any pay plan, just as we've done today and as we did in two thousand and fifteen, are subject to adjustment, scrutiny, uh, you know, changes, whatever.
So me personally, in order to maintain, you know, what we wanting to do, um, maybe next meeting, uh, adjust it from one point five as well to two percent for the police department.
Yeah, I know initially we had a lot of discussion, of course, about that, because the amount of money that was associated, of course, Chief Cross originally had proposed five percent every other year or two and a half a year. And of course, the reason we adjusted it down was because of the cost associated to implement it all at once.
Right.
I think the figure was around a hundred and ninety thousand for us to do the one and a half percent for police. So obviously, if we, if the police scale were to be adjusted to something higher.
Sixty thousand.
It's, it's going to make a, there's going to be a difference. Because then you not only are, not only does it make a difference for new hires, but then you have to go back potentially and convert.
I'd, I'd like to see the numbers, just, uh, if you can, before we make a decision, but I'd like to see the numbers and see what we can do. Just so we maintain the gap. Me personally, I don't know what y'all's thoughts are.
And I see what Chance is saying, though, is, based on the budget we were, we talked about, when we were approving the new salary for the fire department, it came in less if they were to get a raise today. They would be making less. I don't think they want to get less on a raise. So, but when we did the police department, we already, uh, we already.
Yeah, that, that was not the case, and the police.
Right, it was not the case, and everything was already adjusted appropriately, so I'm just afraid that if we go back, I'm not saying we can't go back and look at the numbers, where now I'm adding more to our budget, and.
Well, we're definitely going to be adding more to the budget.
Yeah, so I'm not so sure if we do that, then we almost have to look at the fire department again.
No, I'm just saying the intentions were is to separate the pay some, and then by doing that, we're losing some of the separation that we had. When you're giving one, two percent every year, and the other one and a half.
But is it going to be, was it two percent every year? Goes back to one and a half after this?
To what Councilman Yates was saying, let me clarify something. So how existing employees got converted, we already established that. That was a two and a half percent conversion of existing staff. So that would not necessarily change on what they're currently being paid. What we're talking about is how the annual steps moving forward would be. Do existing staff and new hires get one and a half, or do they get something higher than that? So, so yeah, it doesn't affect what people got converted to, it's only moving forward. Which would have an impact on the next budget, because I've already budgeted. Everyone who's eligible to get a raise on their anniversary, which is most officers, unless they were capped already, instead of budgeting one and a half, I would have to budget the additional, so.
Let's just look at the dollar, I mean, you know, I don't know if it's feasible, but just.
Can we approve this budget?
I think, yeah, I think we should.
Oh, yeah, you just go back and you make an amendment to the budget.
And if we want to make an adjustment.
I believe the, I think we had the discussion at budget time that the mayor had mentioned, we were, there was some parking lot items that weren't not yet funded, because we wanted to see what end-of-year rollover would be on cash. And then we potentially would have another discussion either in July or August to see, um, what, how we could fund those items. So I mean, that could be a time at that point where.
Right. I ain't saying we can do it, I just want to see the numbers associated with it, and I want to try to maintain the reason we did this in the first place, you know?
If we, if we can look at, and I'm just asking, um, numbers, is it also that we can look at the cap also, or, I mean, if everything is negotiable, is the cap negotiable as well?
The only thing I would say with the cap is there needs to be, um, some level of consistency and some method that was come up with to establish equity amongst the different caps. But I would assume it's in a pay plan, so any figure in that pay plan, be it a cap, be it a step increase amount, is subject to change considerably. be it a step increase amount, is subject to change consideration. I would just say that we would come up with some fair way, whatever that way is, to maintain the integrity on how it's currently set aside.
Okay.
Got too many papers here.
I do have one more question, I'm sorry. On this, where it says merit increases, are we, is that still the language we're staying in there, because I thought we talked about.
Yeah, we did, and so, you know, we've implemented, obviously, the police plan, it's in effect, we're now potentially going to be implementing the fire plan. The other aspect that is kind of the last of the three is civil service pay and how they are paid. Your public works and store modern, admin, plan, all the other departments. And I think I, there was some discussion, albeit not a whole lot, at the budget that maybe we, for those folks, we could re-implement a step in grade scale rather than a merit-based system because of some of the issues that a merit-based system has. But because of some of the costs associated in us moving forward kind of on police and fire, I think the next step would be civil service employees. And so those, everything with merit has now gone away with police and fire. So merit technically, although it's still in effect, although I think under the current administration, actually under the previous administration, I think there were more of cross-the-board COLA increases for employees rather than merit-based. That was kind of maybe more of a system that Mayor Inyard had put in place.
But if we, but if we keep it in there, which it is in there.
Yes, at some point, it would need to be removed, it would be stricken if we went with some other plan, yes.
Okay, but for now, it's okay to leave that?
Yes.
Good. Anybody else? No. All right. Hearing none, we don't need a motion to approve that policy and procedure manual, three point five, three point six two, point six, three point six point two, and three point six point three.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to the city of Radcliffe's policy and procedures manual, three point five, three point six dot two, and three point six dot three. Point, dot.
Point, dot.
Either way.
All right, we have motion, do we have second?
Dot, dot, I don't like dot, dot.
So, second by Ms. Merle? Oh, Owens, okay. We have a motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call vote, please?
Geroch?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, next on the agenda final is the mayor council comments. I just want to, Ms. Jackson, I will not be able to attend tonight because I'll be in Louisville with my mother-in-law, but I'm assuming that you will be at the NAACP function going on, back the Juneteenth function going on, so I'm going to present you this proclamation after this meeting, and hopefully you can share that with the organization.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody else is attending, anybody else? Ms. Owens, I'll present, I'll, you both can get up and read it, one line each. All right, so that's all I have, anybody else got anything?
Nope.
Ms. Owens?
I thank you, sir, for our proclamation.
Yes, ma'am.
From the city of Elizabeth Town, of course, Mayor Gregory.
Pull that mic down, ma'am, if you don't care.
As I said, I thank you for the proclamation, for our law rule, chapter number one-ten, Order of Eastern Star, PHA, for our community work in the community as well as the celebration we have this weekend. So from you and the mayor of Elizabeth Town, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for addressing me first before the mayor of Elizabeth Town.
He'll probably call me. Thank you.
Ms. Merle, you got anything?
I would like to say happy Juneteenth today. Federal employees was able to have the day off at Fort Knox, and my son was really happy about that, so happy Juneteenth to the United States of America for another federal holiday.
I just want to say happy Father's Day to all of our fathers out there this weekend. Sunday is Father's Day, so. Hope you get to enjoy your day.
And then, speaking of, of that, we will probably, we'll add that to our holiday schedule for next year. Obviously, we didn't get it on this, talking about the federal holiday, so.
I thought you were going to add Father's Day today.
We'll add Father's Day off. I'll give everybody off on Father's Day. Everybody better, everybody, so.
That's the only day, you know, I, I get to grill for the family, get to cut the grass before everybody comes.
Happy Father's Day.
Yeah. Make sure the poles cleaned, yes.
Well, hearing none, so I appreciate you all, I know there's a couple of you guys on here, this is your first opportunity for a budget, hopefully it was, you got an understanding of kind of where we're at in the city. It's a whole different ballgame when you kind of sit up here and you have to go through everything and figure it all out. Ultimately, it's, it's, it's a very tight budget, obviously, you know, twelve million seems like a lot, and it is a lot, but when you start breaking it across all departments, it obviously goes a lot quicker than you, you hate to see. So I appreciate y'all's work on that and willing to figure all this out, and so look forward to starting that new budget. Chance, we'll have those documents ready, and then we'll have our amendments, obviously, of any potential savings rollover and all that stuff. Our last payroll, or pay checks go out July tenth, so after that date, we'll have a better understanding what we have to roll over with, and then some of those things, we'll get back together and discuss what, maybe some obviously projects and stuff we can, we can have, so. Last thing, July fourth coming up, July third is our fireworks show, we'll keep getting that information out, we're working still with the police department to get those, probably seven, eight o'clock, we're going to start lineup, stuff like that, so again, I'll be here, and so we're excited about that, so with that, I'll just take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all.